All right. Good evening, everybody. It's 7:03 PM on August fifteenth, 2023. Wayne Township Board Trustees Meeting, call to order. May I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Jacobs here. This is Colvin.
Here.
Mr. Patrick here.
All right, and any guests, if you haven't signed into our sheet, please sign in, and we will, everybody, please, throw me in the pledge release. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undergone indivisible liberty and justice for all. All right. Two of us were here for the last meeting, so I will make a motion to approve the meeting. Please, please.
I will second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, excuse me.
Yeah, you can, I.
I'm standing.
Sorry. All right, we do have one change to the posted, and that is just that we are going to, we have one more resolution, but it's like a this page intentionally left blank kind of thing, so. All right, do we have any citizens comments? All right, moving on, our road department report, Mr. Scott Cameron.
Good evening, board.
Good evening.
Um, I really don't have anything to, my report was rather lengthy, so I think I got it all covered, and I don't have any updates or additions, so I'll stand at that with my report as submitted. So, it's all I have unless you have something you need to throw back at me.
Yes, striping looked good. I did, I went and looked at striping. Yeah, roads look good. And then thank you for the tree, too. I'm hoping that there was no major issue with the tree.
Oh, okay.
Good.
I was out at Sales Road, and near that, that corner right where Clifton Lamb's house is.
Yeah.
I mean, there's fifty-seven sticking up out of the road like this. I mean, is that work warranty that we got? Because I mean, just the smaller stones didn't adhere at all.
Not that, not after this, not at this length. I mean, it's already gone through a winter.
Yeah.
So.
I mean, it's, it's bad.
Well, I mean.
I, I love that way.
Oh, it's, I mean, see, I.
I'll head over there.
I kid you not, I mean, you have fifty-seven stones sticking up out of the ground like that, like, people puncture their bike tires and everything else out there, so.
I went over to Hacker Farm, and then I went up to, well, I've been on guard because I lived there. But yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm gonna check out Sales Road.
Yeah, I, I went up guard the other day, and that, that seemed fine, but.
Well, that was a double chip.
Yeah.
I mean, and it, and it has gone through a winter, so, I mean.
We probably need to look at, I, you know, I know there's not many folks who live out there, but it's, I don't know what kind of Band-Aid we can put on that, or what we can try to do, but it's, it's rough.
Did somebody complain there?
Yeah, well, I, I was out there collecting signatures. Talked to Cliff probably for thirty minutes. But, uh, yeah, it, it wasn't even the complaint as much as, I mean, I'm away out there. It was bad.
One thing I will say, and I mean, we didn't have that much snow, so plow didn't go across it that often to wear that down, which is usually what happens.
Well, that's why it's about the warranty, because it's like the stone, I mean, the stones on the sides of the road. I mean, there is no, it, it's. Hey, trustees, please head out there, take a drive.
I'm out there after this, yeah.
It's no problem, yeah. Thank you. That, that's all I had. You said it's on the corner? It's especially bad there on the corner.
Okay. Are sales in the mail?
No, on the bend of sales.
Oh, okay. But we got some free striping.
Yes. I, when Linda called me, I, I, Linda, have you been drinking? And I'm like, what? So, I got up there, and sure enough, they striped it, and I said, well, I said, I'll tell you one thing, I ain't paying for it. I said, I'll pay for the stop bar out by Kendrick. I said, I'm not paying for the rest of the striping. And I said, just look at it this way. I said, you guys are special.
Yeah.
And maybe it'll help with some speed.
Maybe, yeah.
Why would you put down the?
It's not gonna, it shouldn't have happened, but it's not gonna hurt anything. And like I said, I, I talked with, uh, the, uh, the guy at the county that worked through the bidding process for, you know, for that, for the striping and the chip seal, that, that went through the county. The slur, it was all our, on our own, because it's a state bid number. And he agreed with me, so. Yeah, it's first time, like, striking the subdivision. I don't know about that, but.
Yeah.
Like I said, it ain't gonna hurt anything. It'll help with the snowplow driver being able to find the center of the road.
Yeah. All right, thanks very much, Scott.
You're welcome.
Um, fire department report, Chief Shear.
Those got, uh, received several apps, and we've had several interviews, and working through the, there were new members in the new business, and the salesman just texted me back after asking again, and he says, tell them the delivery date is nine twenty-one.
Okay.
Complete date.
All right. Good.
Nine twenty-one.
Is there any lettering or anything else that has to be done, or they do all that?
They'll do part of the lettering there, but the door decals get done in Northern Kentucky, and there's the dealer items that they do, like some flashlights and stuff that they don't do.
Hey, remember, are we going to pick it up?
Huh?
Are we going to pick it up?
No, that's under, uh, they, it has to be delivered under its own power.
Okay.
So, what they normally do is they drive it to the dealer, which is in Northern Kentucky, and then he'll prep it, clean it, make all his repairs, check it out, and deliver.
Okay. Awesome.
But there's a, uh, there's a pre-delivery inspection, you go up, and you spend a day or two there looking at everything on it. Then they do a punch list off of that.
All right.
They'll always find something, a paint scratch in there, a stripe not correct, or. Hopefully, it's not a big.
Yeah, hopefully not. Hopefully, it's functional. All right, any other questions?
I know.
Thank you. Next is Stacy Lowing, or is that your report?
Uh, I don't have too much to add, I'm just, um, to point out that the magazine, the deadline is a little bit sooner than usual, about a week earlier than usual. The, um, printing turnaround time is, is longer than it used to be, it's about three weeks, so, we're working on a couple of vacations and a wedding, and, um, so.
You said, what was the date again, August thirty?
August thirty, at the end of the deadline, instead of, usually it's.
I have something written, I just wanted to make sure I had a little bit more detail. Yeah, that's all.
That's good. So who's doing something for the, um, fire department?
Well, I was gonna give my next question with it, too. I was hoping to put something like that in there. So we had like an open house, or ice cream social, or something, I don't know.
Yeah, we need to decide on that, if we could get that in the way, too.
I'm agreeing. That's what I was waiting on, trying to figure out if that's what was gonna happen or not.
All right, so that's before.
We also have, we also have candidates tonight, too, right?
Yes.
We'll still, we would probably be there for that, to be able to have any kind of information on the levy.
Right. We definitely should put something in the magazine about that. So, um, who wants to, who's checking with the school to see if we could have any sort of a, are we gonna have an event at the school besides the meet the candidates, or are we gonna depend on that? But I think we definitely need something at the fire station.
Meet the candidates is gonna be with the chamber, so you're gonna go through calendar, and what we would do there. And then, um, depends if the fire department has a, as well, I mean, I don't know what kind of functions that they have.
We don't have nothing left to come up with, other than the crowd festival, I mean, that's.
And then we're at the football games, too, right? We're always there anyway, but, um, just trying to think with it, because you're gonna always have the booth there if you wanted to, and then we'd do like a recruiting, as well, like you said, for, you know, show them to sign on those, stuff like that, and maybe we'll get some people interested in that, and just attend at some of the football games.
Well, so how about we schedule an open house, pick a date? And that way, we'll all, these other events and appearances and everything else, it can all be advertised, you know, through that and by that, and the work can be spread, so I, I think we're better to set a, a date, you know, sooner rather than later, at least pick it. It needs to be tentative until we, we check and, but, but really, I think we need to get ahead of it, we need to go through and, and really hit the public education hard this time. And I don't think it's wise that we wait until, like, you meet the candidates is gonna be probably.
No, that's not till October, yeah, yeah. I, my personally thinking, what I was thinking at the one is, if we had a sheet to where we had to where, there's a sheet that we could print out, have all the information on there, straight up information, not a yes or no, or anything like that, um, explain to the different bullet points to it, and then on the backside of the sheet, have a recruiting part to go around the whole area, so then, we're also, and I have no problem going out there knocking door to door, and handing the sheets out and see if we can get volunteers as well, or getting maybe some part-time, or at least getting that next round out there. You know what I mean? I think you, you have to, yeah, and then maybe we get a feel for the residents as well.
Okay.
You know?
So, we're not.
Cancer surveys, so.
Yeah, we're not allowed to pay for any of the, um, from township, right? Any of the printing or anything? So.
You have to get W T F D A's.
Right.
Which that's one of our agenda for that meeting on the twenty-eighth.
You have a meeting on the twenty-eighth, to talk about this?
Our joint business meeting, yeah.
Okay, should we come to that?
I guess you can, I mean, we don't.
You sign the checks.
No, not.
Not there, though.
Not to W T F D.
You can come to it, and I'll page it up to everybody that'll be there, the twenty-eighth, seven o'clock.
Let's do that.
Seven PM?
Yep. But that's where we have to decide on, you know, money they wanna contribute, flyers, something like that. But then as far as an open house, I mean, I don't think you wanna do it after the thirtieth. And then, you don't wanna do anything between the first of October and at least the eighteenth of October.
That's busy, huh?
Because that, getting ready for the festival, the week of the festival, the week after cleaning up, you're not gonna get anybody to. You can't tie up, you can't ask volunteers to tie up three weekends in a row.
Right.
And that's, yeah.
I was thinking mid-September, usually. That gives us at least a couple of weeks out. Four weeks out, mid-September, I'd say, ballpark. That's before, it gives enough time in between.
So, so, you know, if, if we attend the twenty-eighth, um, meeting with W T F D, and then by the September meeting, the first September meeting, we'll have a better idea on, you know, where they're aligning on that.
Right, and I mean, that's still, if we, if we decide to do an open house, we can, we still have enough time. No, that doesn't give us enough, yeah, it doesn't give us enough time for the thirtieth to get it in the magazine.
So the other thing, too, that you, that this might be, just those out there, the trustees, for the most part. I saw the other trustees from Miami Township would do breakfast with the board. I mean, and they would publicize the type deal, you, now, it would be, more or less, one of the businesses would be happening, to where we would go there, and then we could have them have a speaker, talk about their business and everything, we could go there as well, invite other people around the community to come into it as well, to share. I know they did one at the Dayton Mall, they did one at, um, a couple of different restaurants that were in town, just to get publicized for it, for the most part. Kind of was twofold, you know what I mean? And basically, just was a PowerPoint saying, okay, well, here's these certain things, here's the reasons why, and then you just give it out there to them, just, just so it's another event that people can see and talk about, at least, and then make us available for them to ask questions.
I think, um, it's a good idea. We, we, we just, we have to make sure that we're interfacing with everyone, talking with everybody, and making sure the narrative doesn't go wild, because, you know, again, I think one of the primary reasons the levy fails is because they see the fire station. And it's like, well, you just spent all that money on that, and it's like, it's not really the way it works, but, you, you know, that's still the perception, and.
Perception is everything.
That's right. Yeah, I'm, I'm a marketing guy, and I'll tell you right now, perception's real.
And I, I would, I mean, you know, I would suggest that you, you know, push your open houses or whatever, or an event or whatnot in September, and then that last week of October, go on your door-to-door knocking campaign, right before the election. That's just.
I went the whole time.
When early voting starts to.
I have, I have football, so I have to get out there every night, I'm out there every night.
Well, sure, but what I'm saying, you know, you're talking about having these, these events, we'll have a better term, and then, you know, and, and interact and whatnot, and then that last week of October, leading up to the election, then, you know.
You have to meet people where they are.
Right. Because Paul's right, I, you know, after, you know, leading up to the Crabgrass Festival, that weekend.
Crabgrass?
Yeah, sorry.
He's on his own festival, the road department. It's road department festival, yeah.
An old friend of mine used to call it the Crabgrass Festival, and I picked up on it, and I've been running with it ever since, but anyway, that week leading to, the week of, and then that week after, everybody smoked. I mean, you know, and, and so you've only got that last week of October, to where everybody's kinda, you know, they're breathing again, you know, and they're, and they've caught up on a little bit of sleep, so, that's, that's my suggestion, for whatever it were.
Maybe you go around the Sock Grass Festival, well, no, those aren't, those aren't people there, those are out of town.
Yeah, there's no voters.
Go around and do this.
There's voters, but not our voters.
The perimeter.
I don't think that's a spot that you wanna get into, because I say, we do have the politicians coming there, and the church people, it makes it rough.
Makes it rough.
Makes it rough.
Keep them away.
Remember the people that come in, they've got some of the years? Then I get to hear about it, then.
That's funny. All right, well, we're still on, um, okay, so you're gonna have something for the, uh, for her? We're still on Stacy's report, okay.
It's the way through that.
Yes, we're coming back.
Hey, thank you, Mr. President.
Yes, I see where we are.
Perfect.
Meanwhile, back at the magazine.
Exactly, back, okay. Anything else, Stacy? All right, thanks.
Thank you, Stacy.
All right, guest side words, our administrators report.
Good evening, board.
Good evening.
Okay, uh, the OPDC cooperative agreement was signed, uh, for Frankland Road application for phase two. That was per our resolution two thousand twenty-three dash thirty-nine. The high department transportation, the State Route seventy-three grid project, those are four dates that I was able to, uh, come up with, that are still on their milestones, so, I checked again today, hoping for an update, but it's still not been updated, so it's still showing an eight-ten sale date, and then a war date on eight twenty-one, so we will keep monitor and see. Our insurance for property and casualty, uh, those items that I sent out to the board, uh, were approved, and we got back the, uh, new premium just yesterday, and I think it was in your bills to sign tonight, so you should pay tax, payment on that, so thank you very much. Also, in your packet, I put the, the TARM of Board of Directors announced the eight hundred thousand dollar distribution for twenty-three, so, of the excess reserve funds, and so Wayne Township's portion of that, we will receive one thousand two hundred twenty-three dollars and forty-six cents. And that'll probably come sometime in, uh, I think, September, October. County engineer bridge closure, or the current bridge, that, uh, announcement was put out, was put on our Facebook, and also put on our website, and that will be closed starting Monday, August twenty-first. And, and Mr. Minister, the stuff that I included in your packet was a link to the YouTube, uh, for the inaugural leadership float on the river from, uh, soil and water. And also in your packet, I included all local ballot issues for November in the ballot language. There was one more that picked up on there that, uh, is in our jurisdiction, and I think Warren County Career Center, with their audit issue.
Yeah.
So, it's gonna be, uh, it's gonna be a free-for-all.
Ours is the most important, just everybody knows.
You can't do anything else if you can't, if we can't keep people.
Alive.
Alive, that's right.
I'm sorry.
That's all I have on the report for right now.
All right, thank you. Okay. Josh, old business.
It is old business, so, um, I've had a crazy month. Um, I just wrapped up yesterday with my last day of RIN USA. Um, and so I, yeah, I had a handoff of, of a lot of things and a lot of projects, and it, I've been snowed. However, I am unemployed until Monday.
Okay.
And during that time, this is all I have, so I promise you.
Promise?
I promise you. It is this week, it's happening, it's the handshake, oh, it's me, yeah. No, um, truly, those, my, my plate's been full, um, but, uh, I'll be going to work for Huffy.
Oh, no, you didn't, that's, that's good. Do you have to bike to work?
No, no, at least me, my. Yeah, yeah.
That's good, congratulations.
But, uh, yeah, truly, I, uh, this week, this week, obviously, I have a big.
Can you share your secret on how you're gonna have a week without, with being married, or wife, or having anything to do? How you do this?
Oh, oh, she's, she's very industrious.
I mean, I, I'd like to know that secret.
As far as, as far as sheets are, you're still a bully.
Yeah, 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 I haven't been home in three weeks, yeah, so she doesn't know any of this stuff.
I won't post this, yeah.
I won't post that.
All right, we don't have any other old business, I don't think, cover everything. Any questions or concerns of the bills we signed?
I have none.
Okay. All right, resolutions. Our first one is twenty twenty-three dash fifty-four, which was, I guess Daryl was going through the resolutions, and this was one that was never, this number was never used, so we're going to use this as a void resolution, which is basically a bunch of nothing. So, just so it goes into our files, and we know that it wasn't something that was missed. And so the future, our future people, ten years from now, know what's going on.
Does he have type of, that is resolution?
In this one?
Uh, yeah, yeah, resulsion.
Oh, yeah. And the one we're supposed to sign? Yeah. All right, I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash fifty-four.
Second.
Okay, roll call, uh, Mr. Patrick.
Yay.
This is Colvin.
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs.
Yes.
Resolution was passed here, this fifteenth day of August. The resolution should be sitting right next to you on your right, uh, stop.
Yes, oh, it's up there.
And this one, if you want, I'll, I'll print this, and I, or.
All right.
Stacy can grab the updated copy of it.
He's gonna have it, he's done, okay. All right, um, the next one is resolution twenty twenty-three dash fifty-nine. It was a solid waste management plan for Warren County that was included in our information here.
All two, two pages.
Yeah, I don't know if he's provided, so.
I went through, I went through majority, yes.
Yeah. I don't think, I, I don't see any, for anybody to come in and talk to us about it, and you asked that last time, Gus. Probably too late now to work.
I mean, she would be more happy to come out, but, um, she had to do that for all townships and municipalities and so forth, I would.
She would, yeah, yeah, so, I was, I was good with the plan, I mean, they just need approval from sixty percent, looks like.
Correct, right.
Yeah, so. I'll make one, so I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash fifty-nine.
I will second that.
Okay, we got first one, this is Colvin, second one, Mr. Jacobs. Roll call, this is Colvin.
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs.
Yes.
Mr. Patrick.
Yay.
All right, the next one is twenty twenty-three dash sixty, and this is a, um, new hire for the fire department, Chastity Bloom, as an EMT B in training. Chief Shear, could you, did she pass her test?
Yes, agility test and physical, all that.
Okay.
Got her letter of release from her family doctor, or special doctor. Just a little background, it is Melissa Lamb's daughter-in-law, Melissa's son, Logan.
Okay.
She lives right behind the firehouse in one of the duplexes. Uh, she's done a ride along a few times with us, uh, she's currently in school to be a nurse. Heard she gets out of that August the twenty-fourth through UC. Uh, she's registered for her EMT class starting in August, at, end of August, at Sinclair. For recreation, she likes to study, go to the park. And she likes to read books, three or four days on book, it takes her, so. She likes to shop and cook, if you will.
Okay.
Scrap. She was really upbeat, interviewed, excited. She wants to try to commit to at least two shifts a week.
Good.
That's, you know, unexpected, so.
Did, uh, did somebody get her for the money?
Melissa.
Okay.
They've been talking about it for over a month, probably.
Okay, well, good. Like to see the plate in action.
Yeah, it's working. It's good.
Any questions?
She mentioned that she didn't really consider it, because she did like, uh, about three ride-alongs?
Yeah, ride-alongs, and it was like, yeah, amazing, but then, after she did the ride-along, she was really, really excited about it, so.
Well, that's, that's a great idea, I mean, it, should we advertise that? I'm, 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 I mean, truly, I mean, if, if, with, with our campaign to try to get volunteers, you know, maybe somebody would benefit by having that ride along once.
We've had a couple, I mean, we've had, you, I mean, and recently, we had Steve Cox's son, or her. And we had another boy, but he was, he was, he was interested, but he just wanted to go and see what was out, so.
You think they have legislation, kind of, mission, Good News Friday, as well?
Hmm?
Okay. Maybe we do that as well, because there's a lot of people read that, and the email comes in.
We used to have it in there for, for Ellen.
I was gonna say.
And get cleaned up, so.
I'll start back.
Eventually, somewhere, yeah, that took off of them.
Yeah. Maybe we do that, the votes are very limited, too.
Yeah. Any questions about Chastity Bloom?
I know. Make a motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty-three sixty. I will second that.
Okay, we got a motion by Mr. Patrick, uh, second by Mr. Jacobs. Roll call, Mr. Jacobs.
Yay.
Mr. Patrick.
Yay.
This is Colvin.
Yes.
Three A, this resolution, we might adopt it the fifteenth day of August.
All right.
Mr. Patrick.
My bills, yes, right on the website. Oh, I think they're.
All right, now our, um, new business, or, um, other, this thermal imaging cameras request for, to purchase some, so, um, you sent us, there's two quotes here, and then I had sent some additional information, but that was not. Can you just, just start us off and discuss what's, what we, what we have here?
Well, the one we had was thirty-plus years old.
Okay.
Packed it up, about a month ago, uh, been in contact with Bullard. Uh, they said, put a new battery in it, charge it, said, well, you got a new battery, we don't make batteries for them anymore. So batteries no longer are available, so we went with batteries plus, they, they were cross it over, get some battery, charge it, put it in, the display's still out.
Okay.
So we talked to Bullard, and they said, well, we don't work on those because they're end of life. So by that time, we started talking to other people, and, uh, had several people look at personal thermal imagers, and you can buy them for five hundred dollars and seven hundred dollars. And then we started looking at those, and they would last about a year, because the display goes out and the batteries are integrated. So everybody wanted to go toward to the personal thermal imaging, rather than the straight thermal imaging. And then, we were talking, NSA is, they was one, and the one they have is also a self-rescue. So if you, that, this ad I sent you, tells you how to self-rescue, have a device in it that activates when one goes down, so the other units would be able to scan towards that person's phone. So that was the one that everybody really liked a lot, and they were the only one that has that, it's also integrated into software to watch it from the outside. So that's when the salesman sent me the price on this one, these, they had them on sale, with the special, you know, buy three, get one free. And they also sent a price on the normal thermal imagers that we also had, so.
So it's the second quote, that's the one for the nineteen. So it's the second quote, that's the one for the nineteen-six thirty-eight?
Well, it's the nine thousand dollars, depends on what you, you buy, you got the, the standard, six thousand, the basic, and then you got the plus, which is two hundred dollars more, so those are two different models.
Okay.
So if you just bought the thermal imager, but that, you know, that is not what they really wanted, so that's how we come up with this. And then the comment was, you get, we had to buy some four gas meters this year, because our sensors are going out of those. So we thought, well, maybe we just buy one of these for the new engine, with the load grant and the four gas meter, so just two different, two different projects going at once, but really what we're interested in purchasing now is the personal one, so.
So at some point, you're gonna use the load grant to pay for the, the main truck one?
The one, yes, one, that would put one, a handheld, they're, they're really rugged.
A little.
But they're, you're looking at two different things. The four is something that you carry personally, so everybody in there, if someone goes down, they can find somebody, it's a self-rescue, so.
So you guys hand it off from like rotation to rotation the next year?
Ship to ship.
They stay in the trucks.
Correct, okay.
Stays in the trucks.
And what we're talking about tonight is just the, the personal ones?
This, yeah.
Okay.
This one here.
Then what was, so then the, um, quote that I sent you from, um, the other?
Atlantic, yeah.
Yeah. Those were not personal ones?
No.
Okay.
Those were like the truck, the main.
Okay, the main thing.
Yeah, the main, yeah. And then M and, uh, Bullard does not make a personal, they make a player, which is a, another version of that, but it don't have the tracking device or nothing like that.
Okay.
So. The, little bit on firemen. Firemen find what they want, and they really hit hard on it. So you have different, like MSA, you know, this MSA dealer covers all Kentucky, half of Indiana, and half of Ohio. So you can only purchase the MSA product from a dealer.
Okay.
So Atlantic sells Bullard, and I don't know how big their area is, it's probably, probably all of Ohio, and probably half of Pennsylvania, maybe some of Western Virginia. So with the designs of everything else, they can only sell that product, so it's, it's really hard to get another quote from MSA when no one's gonna put it, because it's not in their service area, so that's, that's on that, so. And it's, it's, fireman's a whole lot more different than, you know, fire stuff is a lot different than going out, you know, you wanna buy a new car, you go to
Right.
seven different shovel dealers, four.
I should know how similar, you know, different units were to each other, and I thought it was worth getting the other quote from the other, just to.
Is there any state bidding when it comes to these types of pieces of equipment?
Say what?
Is there any state bids that occur for these types of?
No, not, they, usually MSA, all those are on a state bid, but most of them are all the same pricing.
Does any other fire department have these nearby that, say, if you get a big fire, you have multiple engines there?
Now, City Franklin, Carlisle, and Franklin Township went in about ten years ago and bought SDVAs with the tracking, the same tracking devices built into their SDVA.
Okay. So, so nobody around here has these?
No, not yet, he's, he's started, he's sold some to people in Northern Kentucky, he's got, uh, I think he said, uh, Chibia or Cincinnati's looking at them now, because after they had that line of duty death, they're all about personnel safety and all that, so.
So do we have, we have no working unit right now?
No, we have two other
Okay.
full-size ticks, one's carried in my vehicle, which is used on size up, and then the one with the, the engine right now, the one.
Are those the same, that they're thirty years old and in the life?
Uh, the one that's in my vehicle is probably close to eight years old, and the other one's ten years old. And they're both NSA, so. They said, we had it on a replacement, like, for next year, but, but we had a price of twelve thousand on that, so. And what we normally do with load grant, we usually find something that we need to replace, and money goes towards that, but. And that's not to say that we don't come up with something, you know, load grant is not due until the end of September, I think it is, so. It's not that, you know, I know we have to buy four gas meters, and those are about eight hundred dollars a piece, and we've got four they're at the end of life because the sensors are going bad, batteries are going weak, so. And that load grant typically at around eighteen to twenty thousand. We've used it for, we've bought fire hoses, we've bought turnout gear. This year, we're real good on turnout gear.
So you're saying if, if you purchase these personal ones, um, then the twelve, you wouldn't need to spend the twelve thousand next year?
No.
Because you've got things early.
No.
Makes sense. You have a confused look on your face, Josh.
Is it, no, we won't need to, we won't need to purchase them?
We will, we will, next year, we won't have to purchase anything. And I, like I said, we could put it on the load grant if we wanted to buy another one for the truck, for new engine, but we don't need to really, with these coming in, I mean, you'll have plenty of.
So he's gonna take a place of the one that has, okay. Would we, would we gain any more discount if we had the other fire departments nearby wanting to go with this round two? You think? I'm just kinda curious, because I.
I sort of doubt it, I mean, I sort of doubt it.
Okay.
I don't know anybody else that's in the market for them right now, I mean, thermal imaging. I haven't asked him, but no one's mentioned anything about it, so.
So, so just to be clear, do we need these right now?
Yes, because we only have really one on a truck right now, when you normally carry two.
One's in his vehicle.
And one's in my vehicle, mine's not there, I'm out of town or something like that, yeah. And it depends on if a rescue gets dispatched, you know, four, we could put, we could put, actually put one in the battalion and one on the rescue, and two on the engine, so that'd give them three on the engine, which is a normal crew they carry. There's normally three people, the officer in charge and two firefighters, so.
Is there warranty on these, too? Really? I assume he's getting beat up a little bit, I can just imagine.
I know the others are three years, and I think these are three years, but they've also updated the other one to be a one additional year on it. Someone think it was three years on it. Yeah, I want, I want to say it's three years, because that was their standard on.
I'm looking at that thing that he sent us. What do you guys think?
Yeah, you know, if it's a need, it's a need, uh, you know, my concerns are that, you know, no one else in the area has these, um, it is a new thing, you know, it's, it's, it's an untested thing, and at least for our area departments, you know, is there gonna be training that's, you know, required to get people up to speed for that and everything else? Other than that, um, you know, again, so I ask if, if, if it's a need.
Yeah.
If it's a need, it's a need, and, and we need to do it, you know, I've never voted against the fire department, and I intend to, um, you know, I also wanna be very cognizant of the times.
I mean, yeah, I, the thing I like is that we basically save, if we do this now, then we're not having to fork out the twelve grand next year, so it's, this is seventy-eight, twenty-seven, so we're saving money
Yep.
in a way, and truly, I mean, just spending it early, but saving it, so, um. I assume we wouldn't, I mean, they're not gonna sell junk equipment.
It goes to be in a future, yeah.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I mean, technology, the way young people are today, I don't think they'll have any trouble figuring it out, so. And I'm sure there'll be training on it.
So what's our total fire account right now, or fire number right now for the year?
Number of fires.
Fires, yes, that we were talking about, too, or just in our area. Probably over a hundred, right?
About five, yeah.
So the way I look at it is.
Almost two hundred, two hundred.
Two hundred, so basically, basically what you're looking at is two hundred, you got four people involved. You've got a unit that not only just says thermal, but also tracks you and tells you if you go down or stuff like that, so that's also an added benefit, so that's also time, right? Somebody goes down, you get the time to be there, sometimes you, you don't have that opportunity to have that time. So safety feature-wise, it does make a little bit of sense, it makes it a little bit safer for the guys. Not saying something like that would happen, hopefully it never would happen, but you gotta be prepared for the inevitable, too, you know? The other thing, too, like you said, Josh said it's a need, if it's a need, it's a need, like you said, right? And you could show to me that it's a need, that's one thing, two hundred fires definitely, you know, shows it there for that, so. Houses are getting bigger, too, they're not getting any smaller.
Yeah.
And if, if NIOs reports on firefighter fatalities and, and saves and stuff like that, it's always, the ones that are saved is always either self-rescue or the initial crew is able to rescue.
Yeah.
By the time you get the second team in there to do it, it's too late.
Correct.
Dave did a lot, you know, read up on these pretty much today, and I don't know, last couple days or whatever, but he likes the, the tracking part of it, and he was checking in on the, the iPad part or the outside tracking. And I know that Franklin and Carlisle, uh, Franklin Township has the tracking, and they don't use it because they don't, most of the time, they don't have the people to set that all up, because of, uh, it takes an extra person, and nobody has the extra person, so. Theirs is integrated in their air packs.
Okay.
Gloves and monitors are air and everything, that on their box, so.
Okay.
But if you look across the county, there's probably ten different models of thermal imaging that people's using.
Oh, yeah, it's, it helps.
Now Deerfield bought everybody their own personal, at five hundred dollars a piece, they, they bought a hundred, over eleven.
Wow.
So. But they, you can use them for everything, you need electric investigation, odors, odor. It's pretty much used on everything, even wired down, you use them, so.
All right, um.
Is this something we're deciding on tonight to be forward with, or?
It's an August special, so I assume that at the end of August is our last meeting in August, so.
The reason it's been presented for board nights because it's, uh, out of Paul, or it's out of my experience.
Yeah, okay.
One of the note on this, with, with this, with this, these units, you'll have four units under, uh, the thirty-five hundred dollars, so it won't be a scheduled item on insurance, so it'll be under that two hundred fifty thousand dollars that we have for miscellaneous equipment. If, you know, we were to lose one, trade one, or whatever.
Thanks for the information.
Yes.
Making motion to approve seven thousand eight hundred twenty-seven dollars and sixty cents for the purchase of three lunar thermal imaging systems.
Actually, we get four, don't we?
But we're purchasing.
Purchasing three, that's right, yes.
Yes.
And the related accessories.
Yes.
I will second that.
The motion by Mr. Patrick, second by Mr. Jacobs, I guess a little favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, next on our other is, um, Archive Social.
Okay, this is something that's, I've been, I'll pull upstairs, get a, a bit of part B on this, uh. This is a company that does social archiving, uh, for media sites, and they do it for Belburg. In our area, Belburg, they do it all across the country, but in our area, we have Belburg, Springburg, uh, Centerville. We really didn't have anybody small and local, and I sat through two things on this and went through yesterday on another, uh, educational demonstration and so forth, and what it really does is it tracks, like for us, the only thing we probably use it for would be, number one, uh, the Facebook site, um, because we have no way of tracking, you know, if we did allow comments, we would be able to track comments, we would be able to track, uh, posts, when you take it down and that type of stuff, and what this does, and they specifically worked up, do work for nothing but government agencies, and it tracks everything that's, um, posted, what is taken down, what is put on, so that if you have public records requests, then you can back and capture that, and it'll bring it back up. I don't think we have a need for it this time, so I'm just kinda trying to educate the board of if we put ourselves where we were three or four years ago, when we were inundated with public records requests, and, you know, I know there's quite often that, uh, I think, you know, I post stuff on the page on our website, and somebody will catch something and go, you know, wrong date, or whatever, and you have to go back and change it. The way to selling this is that basically, it's attached to you, so if you have a court case and somebody brings in and they got a screenshot of something that you posted on the website, or a comment, or they had a social media, then yes, right now, you can't tell if it's been altered or not altered, uh, so it'd be up to the judge or the, so, whatever.
So, so, you know, so far as the website's concerned, um, I can make sure that this, this, the new site has a changelog?
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say.
So, so basically, it'd be a, it's, it's a timestamp, it's the database, at any point, if there's something that's modified, it will show it's modified, who modified it, you know, all that stuff, so for the website, we should be good.
Good.
Um, as far as Facebook is concerned, um, you can do a full extraction of any data that's, that's in Facebook in the settings of the page. Um, as far as the edit history and those types of things, that's all accessible on there, too, so. I, I feel like we should be good, understanding, you know, that if, if, you know, we have inundation of public records requests, and it's starting to consume too much staff's time, I, I can see the benefit of having a search and find, but, um, I, I, I think right now we'll, we'll be, we'll be good.
Okay, I, I think this is a, do you want to mark screens, that's why?
I'm, I'm, I'm glad you mentioned it, though, because, you know, the.
Yeah, I think.
Yeah.
Yes, I've been working on that.
This is the ideal time, yeah.
So, uh, their cost would be three, three forty-nine a month for the basic, which that would include up to twelve social media posts for sites, uh, but it did not, would not include a website.
That's a lot of money per month.
And then it's five ninety-nine a month for the standard.
For government.
Yeah. I think we'll, we'll buy cameras for the firefighters instead.
Well, at the very end of the presentation, when they showed me the, the costs, and they wondered what I felt about it, and I go, well, you know, I just wish I kept my mouth shut, I said, I don't know, it's, uh, you know.
You're doing the math, aren't you?
It's forty-two hundred dollars if you do the basic, right?
Yeah.
So you're looking at forty-two, but the way that they're looking at it from their standpoint is like, how much are you saving?
Time savings of your, yeah.
So if you have staff, like Josh said, if staff gets inundated too much, how much does that work to you?
Yeah.
And so right.
But somebody still has to go and use their tool and do it, I mean, it's not like it's like automatic.
Yeah, well, it just helps.
Yeah.
Where my mind goes is that, uh, if we were getting to call in on a court case for something for not being able to reproduce a public record request, and then we're fined a thousand dollars for documents.
Yeah.
Then that's, and, you know, and we had individuals before that had threatened to do that or try that, so. Uh, that's the protection, I guess, I was looking for, and that's kinda what I took out of it, but, uh, you know, again, I'm not worried about it at this moment. Uh, but it's just something to think about now.
I think we're all technical enough that we could figure it out.
It's like, like right now, I know I have a bad habit when I clean up our, our, uh, website with the announcements, uh, when it gets full and I have to start taking things off, you know, those aren't being archived.
Yep.
You know, like, some of my, like the nuggets, they're, they're in a folder, but some of the other stuff, you know, I just delete it, and it's, it's, it's gone, so. And just pop the space it out, and then you check with our record retention.
This, this new framework has just a button, you hit archive, and it, people can still see things, but it will take it off your front page.
Oh, okay.
So, so, you know, you can have whatever news, whatever kind of events posting, but if you archive on something, people can click into your archive and see anything that's happened in the past, but, you know, that way it's, you know how I mean, about that transparency stuff.
Yeah, okay, that's good. As long as you make it happen, then we'll be good. Yeah, okay, that's good. As long as you make it happen, then we'll be good.
Alright.
That's all I have on archives.
Okay. Village of Corwin Stormwater Project.
Okay, Village of Corwin Stormwater Project, um, as you're aware, they received, uh, a little over one point one million, close to one point two million for Stormwater, uh. And got a call from their engineer, uh, they're putting this project together and they're, even at the one point one or one point two million, it's still gonna be about six hundred thousand dollars short of being able what needs to be done. Uh, so they're gonna be applying this year, uh, to do September eighth, the same OPWC funding cycle that we're applying for. So we will now have Lake Township, Village of Corwin, and also the Village of Wayne, so they're gonna be applying for additional six hundred thousand, uh, dollars. They are also looking for a partner in order to pick up all the extra four points, um. So I've told, you know, I threw it back at them that, you know, we need to collaborate and work together and they need to pay for their portion of our, uh, Corwin Avenue project, there's also some work that they wanna do on Corwin Road as far as storm sewers. And I think that one that crosses there by the mill might be one that they're also looking to.
Looking at, yeah.
If not part of this, the following year, so my thoughts there, that in order to score points, it could be a double culvert project where we do that one and one down at Milltown Road.
Right.
And Corwin Road, which could be ours, and we have one of ours, one of theirs, and we collaborate on that in order to score. Uh, so just giving you a heads up and, you know, that if we can work together, the minimum amount to pick up these additional four points is either five percent of the project cost or a minimum of twenty-five thousand dollars, so. The only other thing I have for their first phase or their first project, which is, uh, subdivision.
First forest.
First forest, is it is on our road on Corwin Avenue, and where that Stormwater drains underneath Corwin Avenue through the cemetery.
Right.
What's our bridge structure or our culvert structure? Is that our culvert? Is that county bridge? What is that label?
Yeah. That would be our culvert, I believe, off the top of my head.
Do you have, do you recall what it, kinda shape it's in or whatever?
The, I believe the last time I, it was in good shape. Uh, but here, I mean, I'll say that with, but I'll reserve the the right to refer to my records.
Discussing this, and I thought, well, that's my key to time, then to include adding part of their Stormwater project, because all that Stormwater is gonna be coming through that little device.
Right.
Okay.
Are they also looking at the bottom of Clarksville here? Because all that structure is, is fifty-five gallon drums butted against each other.
Well, they did say that, uh, Sean said that they had on the county roads somewhere, which this is where I got confused on the phone, because I don't know if they were talking about the one on Clarksville Road here or which would might be at the end of, at the bottom of Hill.
Right.
I don't know if they're talking about that one, they're talking about the bridge one here on Clarksville Road.
Right.
This will come through the cemetery, or whether he was referring to, uh, right there, the corporation limit where it crosses underneath the railroad tracks. Now, I thought we replaced that a few years back, but I, we did something, Corwin did, or we did, right there's the corporation limit at the mill. I can't, couldn't recall exactly what was done on that.
At the mill?
Yeah, there was plugged up.
Oh, we we put a tile in there for the Village of Corwin.
Okay.
I I did, we did the work, I did the work, they bought the pipe, we just installed it.
What I can do out of town was there, the county engineer's office had one that needed replaced, and I couldn't, in my mind, locate where he was talking about, and I don't think he really had it. I think he was getting information from the engineer's office, so.
Well, there was some conversation a few years ago about the county engineer helping the Village of Corwin with this specific issue. But and I'm referring mainly to the Stormwater at the bottom of Clarksville Road there at the entrance of the cemetery, or back up this way. And I know that you guys, you guys will never hear about this part of it. Um, but then also at the corner of Main Street and the Avon. Tying all that in, and that's where the fifty-five gallon drums butted against each other come into play.
Okay, so I'll short note this, the fact that, um, we do have the Corwins engineer that's working on this project, and again, on short notice. And, uh, September eighth is the final deadline for submitting all of these, so there may be a resolution on your agenda for September fifth meeting. When I find out in detail what's going on.
Right, well, that, yeah, we need to do a little more investigation.
Yeah, right, you guys got your work done.
Yeah.
Alright.
So that, this is just like saying, more so of a heads up or whatever, and I did tell him that we, other than paying for their portion going through Corwin, we really don't need their participation on our OPWC because we have the Village of Wayne's all on ours. Uh, and you don't get any more points for.
For doing double.
Yeah, for the double.
Right.
Uh, they should be good on their project because, uh, there's a category in OPWC where you get federal funding along with it, so they'll be picking up points for federal funding. They'll be picking up points for being over ten years since they had OPWC project, and this project they're putting together should be a top scorer.
Yeah, it should score very highly, really.
So who's gonna get left out? I don't know, uh, whether Wayne's all is, or whether our project will, or not, I guess it really depends on what other jurisdictions, what they're submitting, but.
Right.
We've done a lot of work, we've submitted up to our area, so it matters, I guess.
Yeah.
So.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Sounds good. Any correspondence, Gerald's on here, have you had any?
Uh. No, um, I can have a written correspondence, didn't have something that, uh, had an email that came through a couple days ago, but I can't recall. I think I've been giving everybody guidance, uh, I'll go forward out to you if there was something that, uh, you may need to be aware of. If it was, it should suck out more, uh, more information, letting them know how to, how to do something, and now it's coming back to me.
If you talked long enough, it would have happened.
Lidle Ferry Road, uh, there's been a complaint lodged through the one county engineers, uh, came, we humped the site or whatever, and they submitted. The county engineer referred it back to to me, and it's due to talk about back when we did our comprehensive land use plan of Lidle Ferry Road becoming a four-man highway with maybe turn lanes and so forth. But what that all came about is, on the county engineer's thoroughfare plan, Lidle Ferry Road was upgraded to a collector, an urban collector road, I think, which is the the higher scale, and that just puts it in that category that it's got a higher
Traffic count.
And possibility that, you know, that that road needs to be looked at at some time in the future, and so I guess this individual that filed this felt like now is the time, and now is the future, that something needs to be done because traffic is just going the racetrack and through there, and it's just a lot of traffic that's heavy and so forth, which it is, but it's, it is compared to what, you know, what's what's relevant. So I did forward on into the engineer's office, copy that that section, transportation, transportation section of our comprehensive plan where it lists Lidle Ferry Road and their downtown, two or three different goals or objectives, where they want us to work with the engineer's office, whatever, keep this in mind. And so now that they understand where that comment came from, and they responded back to them, and I will forward you that copy of that email that they sent back, I guess what I'm meant to do this afternoon is copy that off and give it to you. And it just shows the engineer's response back to the residents on Lidle Ferry Road, and that's basically that, at this point in time, there's nothing that they anticipated doing.
Okay.
The forty mile an hour speed limit right through Corwin, or excuse me, through Lidle, uh, is about all they're gonna do, the rest of it is, you know, it's out of the, where the houses are close to the road, it's it's out of that area, and it's, uh, it gave them a link to show them what it takes to get the road lowered on the speed limit, and the fact that, uh, it just will not pass the muster to get that speed limit lowered, and if they're just happy.
I know there is a lot of, a couple of residents out there do have their own personal forty mile per hour speed limit signs, like in their front yard out there, that they're trying to really push it to people, like, you know, make them aware.
And, you know, and the dairy fence, I mean, there's about a two-hour window in the morning and in the afternoon, and it's the racetrack.
Yeah.
And it didn't help that they, I mean, it was just paved within the last two years.
Yeah.
Makes it, yeah, makes it faster.
I mean, that's, that's green flag racing right there.
Widenning and putting berms and everything on the side, just don't get worse.
They better stop working on our roads, that's all we gotta do.
Yeah. That's all county, all that out there. The only thing I got out towards Lidle is Hager Farm Lane.
Go out there and set up the church in the morning and the evening.
Yeah.
You think it's bad at Wilmington Pike and Centerville Road.
Boy, backs up there.
No, this is just about bad. And the sheriff's office is working speed line signs out there.
And they did refer that.
They are working that area.
Okay, any, um, short elected officials comments?
I have one. All sports is in full swing, so I think.
Okay, alright.
We have our first, uh, junior high football scrimmage on Wednesday.
Awesome.
So it's tomorrow.
Exciting.
It is exciting. Very good.
Alright, school's starting?
Oh, it's already started.
Yeah, school's starting, alright.
Yeah, very good.
Uh, no work session today, no executive session, so I make a motion to adjourn at eight oh five P M.
I will second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You, Josh, have your two resolutions down, I'll pull it out and go.
Yes, yes, yes.
And then that contract also.
I got that here, Paul.
Yeah, we did the contract already.
How you doing, Josh?